No, the boring is only on backbone for extension of the water and sewer to the three homes on the south side of backbone. But we can't charge the water line until that portion is completed. Then we can charge the water line throughout the entire subdivision. And then once we get a blessing from the EPA, then we can start making connections. But some of those connections will require us to cut through the street to get to the other side of where the main is. And we incur that, but yes, the homeowner will have to pay from their house to the main.
That's part of the, that's the other thing, is that the EPA approval, if it gets known on this, I mean, there could be a delay with the home EPA, so. So let me get this straight, if I was a resident out there, I would have to still hire a plumber at my expense to make the final connection to the house?
We bring, we as a city bring the water, all this regular meeting to order.
Mayor Quirrell?
Here.
Commissioner Mabry?
Here.
Commissioner Fabia?
Here.
Commissioner Newman?
Here. Please join, stand and join.
Public relations is a product of the United States of America and truly relevant for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda, is there any public comment? Just need to make sure that is on and just then say your name. Don't leave an address.
Slide it forward.
Thank you. My name is Carolyn Salt, and I'd like to just comment on the alley between the grade school and, what, Warren Street?
Warren Street.
Warren Street. Since then, excavating, they were doing the work, and I always tell people and tell them that they did an excellent job. I thought they did a good work, and they were very polite, and I thought they did an excellent job. And then I had a question, because I was visiting a friend across from the Oak Lawn Cemetery, and again, it was his last rain, but they were flooded. Is that, are you out there getting work done, or are you getting work done?
Elm Lawn Cemetery?
Elm Lawn, Oak Lawn.
Oak Lawn?
You don't say Elm Lawn.
Yeah. Oak Lawn?
Oak Lawn.
Oh, by the metro center?
Yeah.
I don't know if that's scheduled, if that's going on.
I just addressed, I believe I know some of the folks out there, there's open ditches, so if you go past, basically from Park Tavern going west, those are what I call open ditches. And you get a little bit further out to the west, and those ditches need to be cleaned out, they run all along what I call Park Avenue or Route Six. But anyway, those ditches need some clean outs, just some regular ditching work, because I know some folks have made some comments out of the ditches over, overwhelmed with water, and then it's still in their yards. So I'm sure we'll be having that on our list, because it's one of those things we've got to do for maintenance, it's just a matter of getting out there and doing some ditching.
I'm curious.
Nothing underground.
Thank you.
It's good to hear about, on just any construction, it's good to hear that, thanks, appreciate that. Okay, now, any other public comments? We'll move on to the approval of minutes to finish your.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, tonight I'd like to move that the minutes from the regular council meeting from Tuesday, September 21st be approved, yes, ready?
I'll second.
Motion to second, any corrections? Nicole?
Commissioner Warren?
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry?
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia?
Aye.
Commissioner Newman?
Aye.
Mayor Quirrell?
Aye. Now, we'll go to invoices, we'll start with Commissioner Newman.
Thank you, Mayor, tonight I've got the invoices for the Department of Public Affairs and the Department of Accounts and Finances, and the planning department's $5,388.91. Administration is $9,240.53. Self-insurance, $120,436.14. Economic development, $5,019.55. Property department is $4,318.11. Tourism, $55. Community development, $1,575.70. The total for the Department of Public Affairs and Accounts and Finances is $146,033.94. Mayor, I have reviewed these bills, find them to be true and accurate, and move that they be paid.
I second.
Motion to second, any corrections or comments? Nicole?
Commissioner Warren?
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry?
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia?
Aye.
Commissioner Newman?
Aye.
Mayor Quirrell?
Aye. Nicole, Commissioner Mabry?
Thank you, Mayor, this evening I have the bills and payrolls for the Department of Street and Public improvements as follows. The street department, a total of $26,964.50. Wastewater collection, a total of $379,930.71. The cemetery department, $7,091.82. Garbage expenditures, a $7,730.32. For a total of $421,717.45. Mayor, I have examined bills and payroll, find a way to correct the payment fee made, second.
Motion to second, any corrections or comments? Nicole?
Commissioner Warren?
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry?
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia?
Aye.
Commissioner Newman?
Aye.
Mayor Quirrell?
Aye. We'll go to Commissioner Fabia.
Thank you, Mayor, I have bills for public health, safety, and civil defense. To the police department, I have $65,002.45. For the fire ambulance, I have $42,293.29. For a total of $107,295.74. I have reviewed these bills, I believe them to be true and accurate, and I move they be paid.
Second. Motion to second, any corrections or comments? Nicole?
Commissioner Warren?
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry?
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia?
Aye.
Commissioner Newman?
Aye.
Mayor Quirrell?
Aye. We'll go to Commissioner Warren.
Thank you, tonight I've got the bills and payroll for the Department of Public Poverty Utilities. Electric department, total of $1,000. Electric generation of $46,378.76. Electric distribution of $28,550.60. Electric administration of $12,217.15. Water treatment of $24,210.52. Water distribution of $10,858.82. Water administration of $1,895.98. For the rental of $125,111.82. I've examined these bills, please will be true and correct, move that they be paid.
I'll second that.
Motion to second, any corrections or comments? Nicole?
Commissioner Warren?
Aye.
Commissioner Mabry?
Aye.
Commissioner Fabia?
Aye.
Commissioner Newman?
Aye.
Mayor Quirrell?
Aye. Thank you, Commissioners, so now we'll move on to regular business, which we don't have any tonight, so we're going to go right to old business.
Thank you, Mayor, this evening I'd like to discuss with the fellow Commissioners, well, Mayor, the idea of tweaking our garbage collection. We've gotten feedback from the community, and I appreciate that, and the feedback I've gotten, overall, has been positive, with the idea to go back to the conventional system, but go to two cans, where a lot of the residents have up to two cans. We'll have to keep that weight to a maximum level, I think Pete will be able to look that up, is it 45 pounds, 50 each? So we'd have two cans for garbage, and then, of course, we'd have, as mentioned, recycling, they want to put out to the street. We would go ahead and then have a spring cleanup, see how that goes with the option then having a fall cleanup. I'd like to just commit to the spring one at this point, with the idea that we certainly would revisit it after that spring cleanup to look at a fall cleanup as a possibility. So my recommendation, but certainly here for some profession from the other Commissioners, is to go back, effective, if you get the notices out to the building, something November 1st or December 1st, to get the residents kind of ready to go with this. And then, again, the goal is not to have the guys in the garbage truck picking up sofas and things like that, especially with winter time coming, I just can see a lot of challenges with that whole thing. So that's my thoughts, and I appreciated the public input on that.
And we'll stay with the $2 sticker, correct?
Correct, and we'd be able to sell those, like we had the vendors in pass, hopefully they would work with us, and again, now, I believe the two cans, Pete, help me out, is that, was it one can originally, and now we are proposing tonight two cans?
It was one can before.
So I think the two cans gives them a little flexibility, and again, the key is just to keep the weight of those cans down, otherwise we, again, we fight issues there.
Well, two cans might let them load, be able to distribute the weight between the two, but it also might allow them to throw other things away that they wouldn't have to throw away in spring, so it could be a good thing.
Kind of a compromise and whole aspect. So you suggest that we put a sticker on the second can, or the sticker on the other two cans? Yeah. Anything you got to?
I got to check and see if we got availability of stickers actually.
I think Steve mentioned that there's quite a few stickers. You know, with winter coming on everything, we might want to push this up to the November, first of November. Is the next utility bills on the tenth, is that right?
I couldn't tell you.
Is what, is there three cycles?
We just ran some today, so.
We could wish it to the summer, first of December. Yeah, that's why the only concern is those folks that are getting your notice now, won't get another notice until November, so let's just go to this first of December. Is that?
I'll tell you all three cycles will have a good thing, so yeah. It'd be great.
Kind of a holiday, if I love it.
Monday, whatever it takes in December, that Monday, Paul.
Just between now and the Friday.
Because you don't want to do half the town, second floor, everything. So we should be into that Monday? On the first of December, I don't know what the first of December falls on.
December 1st, December 1st falls on a Tuesday, the first Monday in December is December 7th.
November 30th, then?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
So if that's a consensus?
We're okay with that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Mabry. Any other old business?
I want to address the Bailey subdivision project, that is, it's nearing its completion, there's still some additional work, it has to be out there to get the road winterized, get it ready for winter, and next year it'll be, it'll be paid at some point. This project began, I don't know, when was the annexation agreement?
2009.
2009, this project got started, when we annexed, when the city annexed Bailey subdivision, and part of that annexation was in agreement with the current homeowners out there, that we would have this project done within a five-year period. Well, we're in year six, so we're a year behind. So they, and it's, you know, anytime you do a construction job like this, there's going to be challenges, challenges by the city, challenges by the construction company, the challenges that the residents are going to face as well. That's just the nature of a big construction project, such as this. But they have made some requests to the city to help remedy some of the frustration that they went through, and I'm talking about the residents. And they presented a letter to us a couple of weeks ago, we didn't, it's been about maybe four weeks ago. We did not address it at our last meeting, because we had an issue with a water leak out there, at their, one of the wells, that affected, I think, seven or eight homes. And it took us a good two weeks to identify, find out where that leak was, and get it repaired. So that was our primary objective in that two-week period after we received that letter, and that's why we did not address it at our, at our last meeting, but tonight we'll address it. And I just have some proposals here, I could bring these up, and then we have a discussion, see if they're, you know, go from there. And this is basically, I guess I'm speaking to the residents of Bailey, even though I don't think anyone's here. So this is essentially our response to the residents of Bailey subdivision. We will agree, the city will agree to their request to grade the street, actually, we're going to grind it up, and then we're going to grade it, we're going to rock it, and we're going to grade it, and then we're going to add a dust suppressant for over the winter. They want it done by November 1st, but I don't think we can tie ourselves into a date, simply because we don't know, you know, the water hookups have not occurred yet, we don't know what the weather's going to bring. We've got to get it done, and those water hookups, hopefully, will be completed within the next couple of weeks, and as soon as the water hookups are done, then we can get in there and get this work done. Whether it's done by November 1st, again, there's a lot of factors that factor into that, whether it's the biggest one at this time of year, but it will get done, we'll get that done this year. Also, they made a request that after the repairs are done to the street, you know, we're going to get snow, and we're going to have snowplows going through there, still going to be a gravity surface. So inevitably, there's going to be rocks and gravel, and someone's going to be pushed up into their yards, and they're making the request that, that we get in there and we clean, you know, the yards, it's only probably about a foot or two off the surface of the road, that we come in and clean those surfaces off of the rocks, and the grates going to get pushed up there. And we will, we will do that, and that's not, well, that's all I'm suggesting, anyway. Also, as part of the remedy that they're looking for, there are two connections that have to be made, there's a sewer connection and a water connection at the, at the home. And those costs are approximately together about $500 per home, and we will agree to, or I'm recommending that we agree to waive those connection fees for all the residents out there, not just the ones that were part of the original annexation agreement. I think there's five new homeowners out there that we would include in that as well, so we would waive their connection fees. They made another request, when they signed this annexation agreement, the city agreed to abate their taxes, their property taxes, their, you know, real estate taxes, library taxes, for a 20-year period. And so essentially, they would pay their taxes, and the city would reimburse them those taxes, that's a 20-year agreement. They wanted an additional year added to that, if we didn't get the street paid by May 1st of next year. And again, a lot of factors come into play as far as the, when we'd be able to get there and pay, and part of that is, again, is the weather. So the, I'm going to recommend that we do not offer that. The other was that, the last agreement, although it's last request, was that all residents who bought homes after the original agreement went into effect would also be given a tax rebate that spans two to three years. And that's, I believe, the five residences, and I'm going to recommend that we do not build that route as well. So that covers their points, and I'll open it up for discussion.
Do I think I have to tear their street up to put the water in? I mean, I don't know how it was built and was stuffed out to the homes, both water in the sewer, or is it up the middle of the street, where they got to dig into the street? Conceivably, I mean, they're not going to get that done anytime soon, even if they start today, they wouldn't get all them houses hooked up in a reasonable amount of time, I wouldn't think.
Yeah, well, the boring was supposed to start, you know, this week, either today or tomorrow, whatever, but, you know, I talked to, I talked to Tim Forrestal, and he said it could be a stretch, but they, if that boring gets completed, they could get those hookups done throughout the entire subdivision within, you know, two, two-plus weeks. And he was pretty confident of that, so I will, I leave it to him as far as.
Is this an outside contractor making these connections for us?
No, we'd be making the connections. The homeowners has to, I would imagine homeowners got to incur the cost, and if we, if we waived those connection fees, I mean, there'd have to be a license of plumber to hook the water up.
I think we're talking about the laterals for the water, for some people on the south side of the road, we have to cut through the road to get to the main on the north side. So people on the south will have a cut that we have to perform to reach the water mains on the other side of the street, but.
Is that the boring's for?
Line over to their buffalo box, that, that blue cap valve that you would see in front there. So then, from there, the resident has to hook up at their expense from the buffalo box to their home, and each home will be a little different, because their current is served by a well, so they'll have a plumber, they'll hire a plumber then to do the connection then from our buffalo box into their home.
But as I read their requests, I thought their request was that we would pay the host connections, if this is, if that's not correct?
We have tap fees, so in theory, when you go to hook up to the city, we charge a flat fee, it'll be a couple hundred bucks for the tap fee for the water, a couple hundred for the sewer, a total of almost $500. So we're not, we're not going to be incurring any fees for any of their plumbing, for plumbing for water or for sewer, that's going to be there on their other dime. And some people will not be hooking up, even though the sewer steps, entry sewer steps are currently to each resident's property line on the other side of the curb, so they don't have to dig back in on that. There's some people that have functioning septic systems, and they will elect not to hook up the sewer for maybe another five or 10 years, until their septic system they currently have would fail, and then they will be hooking up the sewer. There's already a couple of homes out there that have hooked up the city sewer, because their septic systems were ready to fail, and they were anxious to do that. So that, we may never see every home hooked up to city entry sewer out there, because they don't have to unless your septic system fails.
Oh, okay. I, other communities that I've lived in where we put in sewer systems for the first time, even if you choose not to connect, you're still going to be billed, this is not the case here.
That's true, that's not the case.
Okay.
Now, the water issues, the potable water issues, they all want to get off those private wells that are shared, because of a lot of EPA issues, and they had to report their well quality every so often to the EPA. So I think they, they're very anxious to get hooked up to a potable water system that we're offering.
Okay, thank you.
Barring weather, how long will this boring take, did Tim give you a next one?
He said, probably a couple days, so it should not be at most.
Boring hookup, everything?
Well, then the hookups will follow the boring, and that's the, and then, you know, that's the process, it might take a couple of weeks, because they have to hook, go to every, every residence, every home. So, and then, also, the EPA has to give us the okay to start supplying the water, and that can be a delay, but best-case scenario, you know, two to three weeks, that's what kind of puts this November 1st proposal on their end to start that roadwork, is, I don't think it's, at this point, realistic.
I think your proposal is fair, I think that it addresses their concerns, I know it doesn't address all their concerns. When they were annexed into the city and given a 20-year tax abatement, on just the fees that they would be paying by being a resident, which included the park district, the library, the actual city's part of the tax bill, and I think there might have been a fourth tax entity on there, but it averages about $1,000, $1,200 a year that we are rebating them back. So if the resident actually stays there for a full 20 years and doesn't sell his home, that's a $20,000 rebate, and they've had the opportunity to enjoy the use of the library, the park district, our city services. So I think that Mayor Quirrell has put together a proposal, it would be fair, if I lived out there in that subdivision, I think it would be compensation for some headaches that have had to endure and us being late, but I think it's still fair for all parties involved. And we're going to give them a quality street next year, 2016, we're going to be repairing that, and they're going to have a nice subdivision out there, raised again.
I think for people who spent years on well in the septic, getting on the city water, city sewer, this is terrific. But I also, I wouldn't agree with you as well, I think the mayor's proposal makes perfect sense to me, it's fair and equitable. Are we okay? I think you're okay. Okay, any other old business? Any new business?
Yes.
Oh, please.
I would just like to mention that it is homecoming week, I know the high school kids have a lot to be excited for, the football team to dance, but I want to remind the kids to please be smart and safe this weekend. We want everyone intact next Monday.
Any other new business?
Thank you, Mayor, I know that in our packets, we see that from time to time, there's been extensions for BuCom, possibly, I believe, purchasing part of the building. Can we just get a general update, what's going on with BuCom?
Absolutely, it's done.
Well, that's, that's good, they, they still find, they purchased the building, half the building from us, or part of the building from us?
Well, they purchased a long time ago, the holdup was.
Finding the title work, I think, wasn't it, John?
Well, I think the holdup was they didn't want to, they didn't want to buy it at that time, what they did was they leased it to purchase, and when the time was up, and all payments been made under the lease, which I think they made in one lump sum, then the property transferred after 10 years. It was just a matter of the, the best way for them to do it under the authority they have under the county government rules, but it's done.
And, and I, I guess the point to be made here is that that was already spelled out, and this transference, the mechanics of the transference was already spelled out many years ago.
In that lease agreement.
In that lease agreement, so it was already agreed upon by the governing bodies way back when, we just had to find the right paperwork to make it all together.
Okay, and that's, I'm sure, a win-win for both parties, is there any more compensation coming to us, or was that already paid during the process?
No, no more compensation.
Okay.
Sorry.
I have one business, Adam, I read with interest the articles in the New Tribune last week about video gaming, the discussion that was in the paper about City of Peru, and how they were looking at Love's Park in Peoria in terms of some of the legislation that they put in place. Anybody have any thoughts on video gaming in Princeton? If I remember, Laura mentioned there were 57 gaming machines, and we have one gaming parlor that I'm aware of. Anybody thinking this is a good idea, or do we need to think about what might be considered ceilings on gaming parlors, or should we just kind of let chips fall within it?
We currently have 15 establishments that have poker machines in them, I would like to think about capping the number of establishments or machines. Bob, you had missed it, our tax base is falling off, it's plateaued, and with the adding machines, we are losing money.
Actually, we're not.
We're not losing, losing from our.
We're not, we're not getting any money. Certainly, I, they're staying behind on you, and that's, they're collecting all this money, they have to disperse it.
I guess my only, and I don't have any qualm or any other, I guess, we certainly have plenty of them, but I'm not sure if we can with them.
We have to take a look at that.
Because I think these things just pop up as a matter of state statute, and I don't know that, I don't recall the city had to pass orders to allow them.
Don't think we have to.
No.
We could limit them by liquor licenses, because you do have to sell beer or wine, so you can limit your liquor licenses.
Looking at the article, Love's Park does have a camp as to gaming parlors, and the city of Peoria requires that if you're going to have gaming machines, that 80% of your revenue must be derived from other sources other than gaming, which pretty much eliminates someone who just wants to have a standalone gaming parlor, that was their way to kind of limit things. So I'm not suggesting anything other than maybe we just need to think about it down the road, if we may have something that they may want to talk about, or think of us, or anything in place that might ward off any of these crimes.
Yeah, I think it's worth investigating to see if, one, we have the power, I'm sure Love's Park, and I know Peoria is a whole rural community, and they have a whole different set of rules they play by than we do, so I would, I guess, ask our city attorney to investigate that, to see if we can control them.
And we could also watch our revenue, when I checked, they were only two months behind, which wasn't bad, so you could go on the Illinois Gaming Board, and, you know, it breaks down establishment monthly. Well, this was before all the shutdown, so it may still be stuck in July.
So we'll investigate, all right, good, then, we'll need to get that further. Anybody else have any business? I have just two items, Halloween hours this year will be from 5:30 to 7:30, 5:30 to 7:30, and I'll make another mention of that in two weeks. And then the last pickup for lawn service will be the last week of November, weather permitting, we get a ton of snow before that, it was before, so. Any public comment?
Did you ever get the time on that?
About 5:30 to 7:30.
You don't belong to that.
Into the last week of November.
Okay, thanks.
Weather permitting, we get a lot of snow before that, and before that. Any public comment? Just your name.
Sheriff, I have, a couple months back, I asked the council to check into the possibility of changing the Redwood passing downtown area to the north end, and they've been, can I hold a be honest there, talk about that deal? We tried to load my motorhome over that, and it just tears everything apart inside, so I'm coming around Redwood Street, I'm at that smooth, we should be able to do that at this one also. The second part of that is if we ever find out this goes back to Pete about. The second part of that is if we ever find out this goes back to Pete about getting the no horns blowing, I would tell them I'm looking at it, it's got that in there now, has the gates that all go down on the crosswalks and in the streets, it gets, right away that they can't blow the horns, we have to check into that also.
We, we have checked into that over the years, it's gonna be extremely expensive for us to do that, probably prohibited.
Well, you've got a little Elway, Illinois did that, didn't cost them a thing.
When we checked, when we checked into it, it was gonna cost us over a hundred thousand dollars.
Your kid.
The, the keys are trained from Florida.
We, we have to, we have to move the crossings back from the track farther than where they are today, and we have to put in bigger and, and stronger barriers.
It's all owned by the Redwoods.
Pardon me?
That's all owned by the Redwoods, not us.
But we have to pay for it, and they say, we, we wanna deviate from their system, we have to pay for it, full rate.
But they really make cherry waiters really nice, believe me, we're close enough, we hear them all with the north wind, you know.
You know, and they just, uh, it wasn't that long ago, I don't think it's been years since they repaired that crossing.
No, that's right, it's horrible.
It was, it was November.
This last November.
They didn't do it very well.
No.
So we can make an inquiry to them, I mean, let them know that, uh...
That, that part we didn't do, Chuck, Chuck Chip, sorry about that.
Okay, yeah, but they know, the one over in Whitehead, they did a beautiful job on that when they put it into this, nice and smooth.
Yeah.
Redwood Street is great, but our main street is horrible.
I agree.
We, we can contact them and ask them to take a look at this crossing and keep on on that. Any other public comment?
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adjourn to executive session to discuss litigation under state statute five, ILCS one twenty slash two C eleven. Motion's on the second. Nicole.
Commissioner Warren, I, Commissioner Mabry, I, Commissioner Fabia, I, Commissioner Newman, I, Mayor Quirrell.